The line that was moved may have been misrepresented to the Budget Committee. Is that in this set of minutes? Remember it was, um, so it was bringing, raising the point. Nineteen thousand dollar reduction or something like that.
No, I believe that was the SAU joint.
SAU budget.
Yeah, that was a totally different one.
Yeah, I think you're right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to, has this already been moved to the...
We've already made a motion.
We've already made a motion.
And second?
And second.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Visitors public comment. Okay, no further. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you.
I have a question. I'm Terri Chabot, I'm from New Durham. And I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but I just wanted to confirm something that I heard through the grapevine. I'm not sure if it's true. So if you could enlighten me, that'd be great. I had, I was under the impression that as a town Wakefield had opposed Common Core. And that you are on another path for your curriculum.
That is correct, yes.
It is?
Yes.
And I can follow up with one more question.
Yep.
And I don't need to spend a lot of your time on this, but I'm just, I'll pursue it in another way as well. I wondered how you went about doing that? As a committee, as a town? Was it parents' involvement? How, how did that happen? Or can you show me, or lead me to someplace that I can find that information? Without taking up a lot of your time tonight?
We as a board did some research on it. And then we researched other standards as well. We did ask for the folks' input, we asked for teachers' input. Administration also had some input. We took a vote as a school board to not go with Common Core, to, to use another standard. That's...
And that was it?
That's the long and short of it, yes.
Wow.
Go ahead, Ralph.
You could probably get in-depth information by watching it on, not to plug Mr. Como's website, but Government Oversight would have historical documentation of it on film.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate it. I'm just, because no one's really asked about, you know, what kind of curriculum you're gonna have, or either you're told you have Common Core and that's kinda it. So I was really curious, you know, having that come to, you know, your system, being told that you think this is how you turn that around. That seems to be a real stumbling block for a lot of towns who may not really want Common Core. They just don't know that they have an option out, and so apparently there's an option here.
There is an option.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. New business, reorganization of the board?
I did, I was curious about, I had gotten a phone call and a subsequent email, but in the phone call you asked some board members what you'd like to have on the agenda. I believe I expressed the desire to see a discussion on the RFP in the process and...
Ooh, did I, I might have missed that, Ralph, and if I did, I apologize. But we can put it on the agenda if you'd like. Or put it under Old Business if you like.
Well, if it's the desire of the board, I thought, I thought because there's items on the horizon, there is a policy that addresses it, that I've been aware of for a while, and I think that it's important to address that policy. So I can wait to...
Yeah, let's get through this and then we'll, we will definitely address that for you.
What policy is that, Ralph? That you want us to confirm or looking to?
Yeah, what am I referring to?
I am referring to, I believe it's... Looked it up to ask. And I do have it. I believe it's B E G H. I will find it, I promise. I'm sorry, it's D J E. Bidding requirements. Needs to be shared.
This is all, we'll take a look at that one before the agendas are completely addressed.
So, yes.
You want to look into it under Old Business, yes. Okay, reorganization of the board? Any suggestions? Steve?
First off, I believe it should be under Old Business, not New Business. But, um, that being said, I'd, I'd make a motion to nominate Ralph Fogg as Chair.
I'd accept the nomination if there was a second. Motion fails.
Motion fails. Next. Steve?
I'll make a motion for Ralph Fogg as Vice Chair.
Accept that nomination if it was a second.
Motion fails, no second?
Nomination fails.
Nomination fails, sorry. Anything else?
Make a motion to nominate Bonnie Seer as a Budget Committee Representative.
I would ask why at this stage in the game, would, would you wanna, while we're right in the middle of budget season, would you want that changed?
You'll be here for the next year and Steve may not.
You don't wanna move forward from the alternate to the... Because we're gonna have to restructure again once elections come anyway. So is that something you wanna hold tight until March? And then when we restructure, then do it then, or... I guess I just don't see where it would be a positive transition during, right in the middle of budget season, where I haven't been the one at the table and...
I think budget season's pretty much over, isn't it? Other than deliberative session. Don't feel you can represent...
But that could change in March again, though, right?
It will change.
Well, that's, that's why I'm thinking about the Budget Committee for next year, actually. But...
And, and I guess my point is, Ralph, is that with elections in March, we always have to restructure the first meeting again. So if budget season is already done and you two have done the year successfully so far, I just think that you should continue until the end of the year, until the elections is how I feel on that. Do you no longer wanna be the representative, Mr. Brown?
I, I didn't make that comment, but I have a problem with some of these other ones staying there.
Well, I think I do as well. So, do you have any suggestions, Madam Chair?
I have a suggestion on a couple of these.
Why are we talking about budget first?
Are we talking, we wanna finish budget, or we wanna...
Is...
I, I guess...
If the business of the motion from last month has not been completed, you know, perhaps one of you may have a Vice Chair in mind you'd like to nominate. Because the only action that was actually completed when the motion was first made, the motion to restructure the board, the only action that actually took place was the chairperson was changed.
Correct.
So...
And now we're going through and we're reorganizing.
So if we just skip beyond Vice Chair, we're not addressing that issue.
Well, apparently by affirmative consensus, no one feels the need to change Vice Chair at this point. So unless you have another suggestion and we can get a vote on this to change it, I don't see how we can change the Vice Chair.
I would just, I would ask you to reaffirm Bonnie?
Okay, we can...
If that's the desire of the majority of the board.
Then I make a motion to leave Bonnie Seer as Vice Chair.
Second.
All in favor? Go ahead.
Why?
Because I don't see any problem with her being the Vice Chair and...
Well, I mean, unfortunately, you weren't here to witness the festivities of November 4th. So now you're gonna have someone who's requesting illegal meetings, conducting board business outside of a public meeting, and bid-staring. So, I guess if that's what you...
Mr. Brown?
Excuse me, I'm, I'm speaking and I haven't finished yet.
Go ahead.
Okay, that's another problem on this board, the constant interruption.
Go ahead.
Now, where was I before I was so rudely interrupted? Oh, yes, bid-staring. So, I mean, if that's the kind of representation that's gonna be directing the board, good luck with that, because I...
Thank you.
This is...
It'll be problematic.
I'll be done. My motion stands.
Don't you wanna call the vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I think you're supposed to wait for that to be called.
Wait for the Chair to call?
Opposed.
Aye.
Aye.
Three, two. Next.
I would still nominate Ms. Seer for Budget Committee Representative. If she refuses the nomination, then I'd move to ask Bob to be the Budget Committee Representative.
I, I'm gonna refuse. And I have to honestly say that, um, in light of, I wholeheartedly support the committees that I am on, but in the light of current events and the mistrust I have in some of my board members, I would consider doing everything as a complete board until elections.
Anybody else?
I don't think that's a bad idea. The, the, the problem with the idea, not that it's a bad idea, but the problem with it is why would you wanna call subcommittee meetings when you can just conduct the business at a regular board meeting?
Then I make a motion, we dissolve the standing subcommittees of the Wakefield School Board, and all business will be brought before the board. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get discussion?
Yes, you can.
So, no more...
No more subcommittees.
Subcommittees at all? And just everything we've done here at four o'clock?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
And the board officially convenes.
Okay. Okay.
And I believe the standing subcommittees this will go with is the policy, the facilities, and the Grant Review Committee will all be dissolved and be brought before the board. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Seer.
And Transportation.
And Transportation will all be dissolved and be brought before the full board should be discussed as a board. And that'll take care of that problem.
What's now with technology? Capital and...
Not a second, that's not a standing subcommittee, those are just, we are representatives for those committees.
Yes.
So it's Policy, Transportation, Facilities, and...
And Grant Review.
Thank you. Kickin' us off?
Kickin' ya off. Now, does anybody wanna make any recommendations of, to representatives to the committees?
Do we need to move the vote, move that vote first?
Did we not?
He did for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we move the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think that's a reasonable solution.
I think that just makes the most sense.
So with that being done, what does that mean for our delegate to the Hampshire School Board Association? Do we still attend, or do all of us go?
You can still be the delegate.
Ralph, are you coming as well on Saturday?
I have registered to be there on Saturday, absolutely.
Okay.
But I, I was just a little bit shocked to hear the Chair declare you'd still be the delegate, but that, I mean...
Well, no, I mean, as, you know, unless we change something here, then that's how it will go. We're not done changing this, Ralph. I'm not presuming that anything will change. I'm saying, in answer to her correct question, until we make any more changes, yes, whoever's the delegate will continue to go.
Sounded like an assertion to me.
Okay, excuse me. Next. Anyone changes?
What have we got left? What's still on, what's, what's still up?
Cafe Services is not being addressed any, any longer, is that correct? There's no more concerns about Cafe Services representative?
You would still wanna maintain those representatives.
We still wanna representative.
Okay, so was that mentioned just a minute ago?
No, that was not mentioned because we still want a representative to that board. So, do you wanna go on the Cafe Services, or do you wanna leave it as Bonnie and Bob?
Should we just start at the beginning and we go down everything that's a representative?
Certainly can.
Yep.
Okay, so the Budget Committee, are we going to stay with Steve Brown and Ralph? Guys?
It's fine, but man...
Do we need to make a new? Okay.
Yeah, I think you should, I think you should make a new alternate.
Does anybody wanna stand in for alternate? Ms. Ola?
Nope.
Ms. Seer? Nope.
Ms. Joy, would you like to be the alternate?
We do need an alternate, so I'll stand in for alternate if we need an alternate.
I'll make an, I'll nominate Bonnie, I mean, Norma Joy to be the alternate for the Budget Committee Representative.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Negotiations rep, we have Bonnie and Steve. Do we wanna make any changes?
Is that broken, has that completed its mission?
For this year?
For this year, yeah.
And there's more, more negotiations on the horizon?
For next year.
Next year.
The teachers.
So that would be something...
Which won't start till after...
After elections.
After elections.
I'll move to table that item till after elections.
Professional Development Committee?
Do we have to vote on tabling now?
Hmm, I don't see why we would have to.
If it's a consensus, it would be aye.
Professional Development Rep, Steve? That's yours, do you...
Well, if someone else wanted...
Anybody want that? Okay. Ralph? No? Facilities Committee?
It's gonna be all of us.
Oh, that's gonna be gone, sorry. It's gonna be all of us. Wellness Committee, it's Bonnie, does anybody else want that?
What are the, what are the responsibilities of this Wellness Committee? It's a one, once a year event?
It's once a month. And it's just input, it's a meeting with, it's just a representative to know what's going on, health and fitness-wise.
Who do you meet with?
Who do you meet with? You meet with the Wellness Committee. Who is Mr. Boynton, the school nurse, other teachers, and student reps.
Sounds like it's a open board, open committee? Nine members? Eleven members?
Do you want me to go ahead and speak?
Please.
All right, so it's a PE teacher, the health teacher, representative from food services, the nurse, a classroom teacher, a parent...
Slow down just a little bit.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
A school board representative and a member of the public.
I would like to stay on if possible.
Does sound like seven people.
No suggestions?
I'll make a motion to nominate Bonnie Seer for that Wellness Committee Representative.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hampshire School Board Association delegate, we have Bonnie and Ralph. Do we wanna keep it as is, guys, or...
I don't mind attending, I enjoy going to the meetings and the conferences that they have. I find them very educational.
Ralph, you wanna stay?
I don't find them too enjoyable, but I do find them pretty educational. So, I, and I don't think one person can properly represent to the board what's going on down there. So, if no other board member would like to take my place, I would remain if nominated.
I make a motion to nominate Bonnie Seer and Ralph Fogg to the NHBA delegates.
As our NH, NH, NBA delegates.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Cafe Services, Bonnie and Bob? Any change?
I'd like to stay on.
I would too, I, I...
Could we go back to the NHBA, who's second?
I second.
The scope of that... Can either of you tell me how greatly our tax dollars are affected by the actions of that committee? Does it, I remember that some part, some parts of the conversation were to keep rates the same, and then Cafe Services came forward with a different contract, and you had to, I think you had to straighten that out to keep the numbers the same. If, if somebody was not paying attention to that issue, what impact does that have on the financial end of it? Would it...
I believe we had to change it. We had no choice.
We had no choice, even though the negotiation said that the price was supposed to stay the same?
Well, that was before, was that, Mr. Tursi, is that before that they came to us saying that the price had to change, right, for the price of the school lunch?
For the lunch, school lunch?
Yeah.
And the board established, ultimately the board establishes the price. However, the price has to be, it has to be equitable in the sense that it has to be fair for those, for students that would qualify for free and reduced lunch. It can't be anything less than that. And we basically have to put together information in a substantial form that we have to submit, that the state kicks back, what, what they recommend as a cost. If we don't go with that cost, we could ultimately end up having to pay and transfer monies into the food service.
So the negotiations were made? And a price was agreed to?
Yep.
And then the contract came forward with a different price? Is that how that happened?
Yes.
Yes. And the full board voted on that.
Yep, and the full board made a decision together. And I would say that, um, tax-wise, we are actually saving money with Cafe Services, which is lowering the loss.
You're decreasing your deficit, so you're not having to make up that difference?
Yep.
I understand.
Steve?
While we're on Cafe Services, I had someone ask me recently what was going on with Cafe Services. At some point probably started maybe back last spring, went into summer. We were thinking about different options other than Cafe Services, but then we ran into a time constraint. And the question to me was, what are we doing with Cafe Services now? So that if in fact we, so we have enough time to go out and look at something else before it's too late again this year.
Okay, we can, we can certainly put that on the agenda for the next board meeting, because that does need to be discussed, but I don't think that needs to be discussed at this time. We're making changes at this point. So, Mr. Tursi, if you can make a note for that for me, please?
The comment I was just gonna make before Steve spoke was that I think that this, we need to put this back out to bid for this next coming year.
So we'll take a look at it on the next agenda?
Which we discussed.
Okay, so do you want to make any changes, Ralph, or what are you suggesting?
Full, with some comfort feeling you understand the scope of it, I'll renominate Bonnie Seer and Bob Valet to the Cafe Services Representative positions.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Aye.
Technology Committee?
This is...
That's me, and as of this year, I have not been called to any of those meetings. Ralph?
This is something that, when we look at my other issue here of the bidding requirements, it's an important position. You know, if we're spending a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a year and we're not communicating with the provider, is there a reason why, um... Yeah, I mean, is it because the contract's been signed and there's nothing to discuss? Is that what it is? Why have you been able to sit in with the Technology Committee?
Um, no. Go ahead.
I believe that it's two different things, isn't it?
Yes.
Technology contract goes through the SAU, and the Technology Committee that she serves on is the committee that focuses on the technology in this one specific building and how it interacts with the educational purposes.
But the same technology company that's providing services here at the school is the same one providing services at the SAU, isn't that correct? So...
Right, but one is different than the other.
It's the same company.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. There is a rep from back bay on the Technology Committee.
Right. But as of yet, this year, I have not been made aware of any meetings that they've had, and I'm not sure that they...
Is it up to the board?
Can you check on that? I mean, because I have not been called to any meetings. So, go ahead.
Is it up to the board to, to set up a meeting? I mean, is it...
They usually communicate with me, I'm just the rep for the...
I mean, if you got a contract, then you got no problems with the money you're taking. Why would you wanna call a meeting?
Go ahead, Mr. Tursi.
The, the purpose of the Technology Committee is not to review the, the service provider. The purpose, the original intent of the Technology Committee was to develop a technology plan, which is a, it's a plan that drives our technology purchases of equipment throughout the, throughout the year.
A money issue.
Mm-hmm. However, it's, it's not driven around determining who the service provider would be to run. And it's just a matter of reviewing and updating your technology plan.
But it's still a money issue, and it's still something that could be negotiated if, if there was a convening of a, you know, committee. if there was a convening of a, you know, committee. And to bounce onto that bidding thing, if we have a policy that requires calls for three competitive bids, it's only fair to the taxpayers in the town to make sure that that happens on an annual basis.
This, this committee would not negotiate contracts, that would be the SAU joint board for our technology services. If it was a Wakefield contract specific to Wakefield, the Wakefield School Board would negotiate that contract, not this committee.
But wouldn't the committee be able to bring forward some information to whether it's the joint board or the, the Wakefield School Board? About, you know, what's being provided, at what cost, and, and what the goals are, you know, that, I mean, to me, if the board says, we need to address this, and the committee member or the representative goes back and says, you know, our district feels as though these issues need to be looked at, isn't, that's the conversation that seems to be missing, right?
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Fogg, this is basically the needs and wants of this building. What's going on in this building, you know, whether they need equipment, that type of thing. It doesn't specifically have to do with the Back Bay contract. It's the, what's going on specifically in this building, whether, you know, internet speed is good, whether they need earbuds, whether they need equipment, that type of thing. It doesn't really focus on the Back Bay contract. It just focuses on all the needs of what's going on within this building alone. It's not a joint board issue type of thing. It's not, doesn't have to do with the contract of, of Back Bay.
I guess my, I guess my point is there's no conversation between the school board and, and the provider. There's no opportunity for bettering either the service or the school district or anything else, so.
So would you like to sit on that, boy?
Not really, but.
I'll make a motion to nominate Ralph Fogg to be the representative of the technology committee.
I second it.
I do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Safe fruits to school representative, we're not doing that. The capital improvement project representative is Mr. Fogg. Anybody want to make any changes?
That seems to be slowly evolving as well. If, I mean, that's, that's a planning board thing.
So do you still want to sit on it?
I don't mind sitting on it.
Okay.
But, again, I would feel more comfortable if the rest of the board feels as though I should be involved with that.
Can I get a second? I make a motion to nominate Ralph Fogg for the capital improvement project representative.
Steve's side, so maybe he wants to be there.
Oh, okay.
No, no, I'll, I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
And the SAU withdrawal study committee is?
That's on hold until elections, right?
On hold until elections. No?
No.
We can, yes?
Ma'am?
Yes.
Because with the, with whichever the way the vote goes in the spring, you're gonna be formed, you would, if the vote goes in favor of the article, then you have two years to wait prior to even asking to set up a withdrawal committee. If the article fails, then you actually form a new planning committee. So this withdrawal subcommittee is null and void for a minimum of three years.
Alright. Alright.
What, can I, can we just visit that again one more time? If the town says they're not gonna accept the withdrawal committee's recommendation, wouldn't it be right back to the drawing board and the withdrawal committee would begin to work on a plan? Saving that, that time span that if it, if the withdrawal committee's recommendation is approved by the voters and they're, with a vote of yes, then I can see the time lapse. But if the voters vote to not accept the recommendation, I think it's back to the drawing board for the SAU withdrawal committee, right?
Steve?
If you will focus, Mr. Fogg, on what Mr. Tursi was saying, he actually said it correctly.
Okay.
An affirmative vote on the article will delay it by three years. A, a negative vote on the article will send it directly back to the planning committee. So that's why we need all the people in town to vote no on, what, Article eight? Article eight, no on Article eight will send it right back to the planning committee for a year.
I guess I just did focus on the last statement that was. Sorry about that.
That's fine. So just for clarification, it's a new, a new committee will be formed, a planning committee, not a withdrawal committee. It's titled a planning committee.
Okay.
You have to get new representatives onto that committee.
Okay.
Okay, now we wanted to take a look at Policy BG, Board Policy Development, and Policy BGA, Policy Development System. Ralph, I think you asked for that, did you?
Steve.
Steve, Mr. Brown asked for that. Do you have a question on those two?
Yeah, there's rarely no process or anything that's being directed by the board. This is kinda just like, one board member can bring up whatever policy so suits them. I, this, and it's, you know, and it's happened, and as a matter of fact, rather recently.
Okay, so.
There needs to be something that is directed by the board, what, what policies will come up, when they'll come up, and that should be, you know, adhered to, not just, well, I don't like someone, I can put this on and that on, and then we don't, I mean, there's.
Which policy are you referring to, Steve? Is this both of them or just one?
Well, all, yes, both of them, but as an example, you know, you have Policy IGD from October fifteenth that's gone nowhere, but yet we bring up whatever policy one board member wants to bring up.
And which board member are you saying, Mr. Fogg, Mr. Brown?
Well, no, we clarified, Mr. Fogg, in the minutes prior to.
Yeah, Mr. Brown, which board member are you saying brings policies?
Well, who, who's bringing the policies up? There, there's no direction through these policies from the board as to what policies come up. Nothing, there's nothing in there from that, from the board. So who's making the, the decisions to what all, what, the policies are gonna come up next?
Would you, okay.
There is none.
So, no, and I, I understand, totally understand what you're saying, so do you want to put these two policies on the policy?
Apparently, we're, we're gonna have to, because I think there needs to be a, a process that is driven by the board and not just one or two members.
Then that's fine, Mr. Tursi, could you make a note that we want to take a look at these two policies specifically? At our first policy meeting of the board? How do we do that?
Just for clarification, since the standing subcommittees have been dissolved, policies would be put on the agenda just as they were this evening. So there's not a, there's not a policy agenda. It would go on your regular agenda, and what I would recommend is if, you know, we would, we could table these two policies and give board members an opportunity to bring some proposed amendments to these policies, that'll be fine. Or if they see any other policies that deal with school board policy development, they'd like to see on there, just let myself or let Ms. Joy know, and we'll put them on there.
Ralph?
Instead of tabling this, I would like to make a motion to adhere to the policies as they're written until the time the school board has an opportunity to review policies that they've decided to review. Until the time we review a policy and decide on a change, there's a process. You have to have public hearings, you're talking about the policy that you want to change, the reasons why you want to change them. Why can't we just decide as a board here tonight? If it says Wakefield School Board will develop policies, it doesn't mean one Wakefield School Board member or two Wakefield School Board members or three Wakefield School Board members says the Wakefield School Board. So my motion is to adhere to the policies as written and work in the future to review policies as the board sees fit, according to policy.
Bonnie?
I guess I'm looking at the policy and I'm looking at J where it says the superintendent or designee is responsible for notifying the board of all policy updates and revisions provided by the New Hampshire School Board Association. The board will then schedule time to review such updates. I have to say that in the policies, and when you put us on the policy committee, you gave us, not, you gave us not permission to like go through the policy book and, and I did this with Michael, with the other policy person, and I can't remember who was on policies before Norma.
Steve.
Steve. So we went through in March, when, and then we went through and you, you, I'm, I'm hoping that you still have my letter of I went through, I read all the policies and I said, what should be reaffirmed, what should be revised, what we didn't have, what the New Hampshire School Board Association recommended. And I gave that to everybody in the policy committee and, and we moved forward through those, Mr. Brown and Mr. Tursi. We moved forward through those. And I guess in the past few weeks, things, or in the past few months, things have been being brought up, but it's not an individual policy committee member or an individual board member, but as things come up and at a meeting they get sent to the policy committee, it's then our responsibility to look at those policies. And it may be a policy that the policy committee doesn't even think needs to be looked at, but if the rest of the board members feel it's important, then that's our experience. We've had a lot of things tabled over the past few months, which has really negated moving further on further policies. But I looked to Mr. Tursi for, other than my own research on the New Hampshire School Board Association website and reading through the policies and the ones that were, you know, we found some that had Cafe Services in them that needed to be changed, and those were all brought before the whole entire board. And the only reason that they were brought forward is because they were incomplete. So our book was incomplete, that wasn't a decision we made alone, we made that in, with our superintendent. So I don't believe that the policy committee has failed to do anything in regards to following BG or BGA. And I think that with, I, I don't, I don't have a problem and I don't think that things need to be changed and we just have to bring everything before the board until we can have a little more faith in one another, if, if possible.
Ralph?
I guess my motion fails without a second for discussion.
I'll, I'll second, can you repeat your motion, please?
My motion was to adhere to the policies as they're written until the time we have to, until the point we have a policy the board feels needs to be reviewed. And then at that time, review it, go through the proper process that's laid out in the policies and.
Oh, I'll, I'll second that for discussion. Again, this goes back to, there is no actual process in these two policies that is being driven by the board. That's, once again, the problem. This is not board action that's being taken, this is something less than board action. And that's the problem with these two policies. There is no, there needs to be a specific process, because as we've recently seen, we can just pull any policy, any one member so, so desires. And that's not the way it's supposed to work. You're supposed to be working as a board, not as one board member directing a whole committee.
Actually, I have to yield to let the other members speak if they'd like to.
Okay.
And actually, if, if I could just say, finish up in saying that if we're putting these two policies on the next agenda, I would like policies BBAA, Board Member Authority, which no one has, and BCA, Board Member Ethics. Thank you.
Go ahead, I'll yield.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
I guess I'm gonna ask everybody that's not on the policy committee to go read through your policy book and find out what you think needs to be reaffirmed, what policies we don't have, what you think needs to be revised, and have all of those available so that we can all mash together. Once you completely read your policy book, so that you all know what's going on and we can all be on the same page.
You're saying we don't already do that?
I'm saying, didn't we already do that?
I don't know if everybody's already read all their policy book or not, and if you've made your list of what you think needs to be revised, reaffirmed, or what we don't have.
But.
Mr. Valet?
But isn't that the policy committee's job to do that?
It is, but now we're all policy committee.
Right, we are all policy, and I think that.
It's been done prior to this.
But we're being told that we didn't do it right, Mr. Valet.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Brown's on the committee.
He is.
No, I'm not.
He was, he was.
And once again, I'd like to, there is no process as to what policies come up. If anybody can just go through their policy book and say, well, you know, today I don't like Johnny, so we're gonna bring this policy up. That's, that's, I don't believe that's the intent of either one of these policies. There is, and that's the problem with these two policies, is there's no actual process that policy XYZ will be looked at every six months. There needs to be a process so that we don't have any more abuses of the policy.
Mr. Fogg?
I have to disagree with Steve on the way these policies are written. It does say the Wakefield School Board can review them, and it does talk about, when Bonnie said J, it's talking about the superintendent or designee, which I would interpret, my limited capabilities, that's, that's a designee not of the school board, but of the superintendent at the SAU level. So, I mean, only because in this policy, the last paragraph says, "A member of the SAU staff is to be designated and delegated by the superintendent with the responsibility to maintain the board's policy reference files, to draft policy proposals as instructed by the board or superintendent, to maintain the board policy manual, and to serve as a liaison between the board, the NHSBA, which is New Hampshire School Boards Association, State Board of Education, and other sources." I think these policies, the way they're written, they're complete, they're understandable. And that's why my motion, which I would ask to move the motion, is to adhere to the, adhere to the policies as they're written. Please move the question.
There was a second, right?
Was there a second?
There was a second.
I second it for discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hold business. Hold business. Administration?
You did tell me I could bring up my policy.
Oh, yes you can, Ralph, and I apologize, go ahead.
Oh my gosh, it's the bidding policy. Anybody remember what it was? DJE, I think. Bidding requirements. The reason I'm asking to have this addressed, and I asked to have it on the agenda, as things are out for bid now, it's talking about three thousand dollar amount. It's talking about when the bidding procedures are used, where they're gonna be advertised in two public places for three days. Talks about having.
Can I, I don't see three thousand dollars online.
I believe, believe that's been updated.
It's here.
Mine's, mine was adopted May thirtieth, two thousand twelve.
This was adopted August sixth, two thousand thirteen. So do you want to read this? Five thousand dollars.
Okay.
When feasible.
Yeah.
On or at least three competitive bids.
Yeah. Okay, does it also say, "All bids must be submitted in sealed envelopes addressed to the board and plainly marked with the name of the bid and the time of the bid opening. Bids shall be opened at the time specified and all bidders and other persons shall be invited to be present." Does it say that in the policy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so why are we directing people at the SAU to be opening the bids? Wouldn't we be undermining this policy? In my opinion, and what I've tried to share with our board members and.
In my opinion, and what I've tried to share with our board members in previous conversations, I've always thought it's the board or commission's duty to open a bid that comes in in a, whether it's plain brown envelope, just says bid, RFP, you know, it doesn't even have to have a return address because some, sometimes that skews things. I don't understand why the school board isn't adhering to the policy, opening the bids as they come. And certainly we have the ability to sit and not open brown envelopes or white envelopes until we have that third bid. So we're not opening up bids and disclosing numbers and putting it back out to bids so that somebody already knows those other numbers. And why are we not adhering to this particular policy and allowing the school board to open the bids?
Going forward, that is the policy. And I think that the bids need to be addressed to this, brought to the school board. And unless something changes, that's the way it should be handled because that is what the policy states.
Bonnie.
I guess I would like to ask to have this put on the policy committee, too, if possible, because I guess, um, I'm not an expert in all fields. So if it was cafe services related or transportation related or facilities related, I would want the person who's in charge of that for us, as well as the superintendent and the business administrator, to be here with us so that if we have questions or concerns, they can, I, they can be here to address the answers to that at that point in time. So I would like to see that being added to the policy so that we...
It's in there. "Bids shall be opened at the time specified and all bidders and other persons shall be invited to be present."
I, I didn't take it as that. Other persons, I, that's fine. It's all interpretation, Ralph.
Well, I mean, I'm another person. I'm not a bidder.
Right, but should we make it a little bit more specific, I think is what she's saying? You know, should, if it's facilities related, should our facilities manager be here as well as?
Well, the facilities director or the superintendent would be able to say, you know, "We're opening up the bid and we're going like this." And, "Well, this has that information that's required according to the RFP. And what do you think?" I mean, we'd, we'd have the discussion and then we'd be able to say, "Mr. Tursey, Mr. Adams, Mr. Williams, is it your opinion that this complies with the bid requirements?" And that way, what has, has happened is bids get opened, they get vetted, and then they get presented. And one person's interpretation at the SAU level may not be the board member's interpretation of what qualifies.
Can I ask a question, which I just don't know? Have they been opened at the SAU level because you make copies for all of us so that we can all have a copy when we read them? Are they vetted through your office or just copied through your office and given to us?
The current, may I have my chair? The current process is we set a due date for the bids. The bids are usually due on a specific date by four o'clock. At four o'clock, whatever bids are there, we sit and we open. It's usually Mr. Adams or Mr. Castle would be there, but it's always two people that are there. They open the bids. And then a summary sheet is put together on the bids. Um, those two people make sure that they have all those requirements. If they don't, a phone call could be made at that point. A summary sheet is put together and the summary sheet's been what's provided to the board. That's the process that we've always followed.
Maybe, maybe in following, that's where the conflict is coming in. So we would have to have some form of a policy because opening one bid is great, but five of us can't all study it at the same time if there's only one copy.
It's, it's maybe the process. It's adverse to the policy. First and foremost, it's adverse to the policy. But it's also the problem because the experience has been, you, you can open a bid at the SAU level and then whoever's reading that, one or two people. So it's, it's a board duty responsibility to find out where the money's being spent. But that one or two people has the opportunity at their discretion to pick up the phone and ask the potential bidder, whoever's coming forward to us, certain questions. Would you like to answer this that way? Would you like to answer, you know, it's selectmen, assessors? We ask for bids, we receive them, we open them. We don't allow the opportunity for, I mean, why, why allow the opportunity for a singular or two people that aren't in the position of having the responsibility to direct, manipulate, divert at their discretion, their forwarding what they feel needs to come to the school board. It's the school board's duty and the school board's responsibility to make sure that we're making the decisions. And the policy backs that up.
Okay. Mr. Brown.
Well, I, I have, are you done with that topic? Or I have something else I'd like to bring up on hold business, if you are done. I guess you're done. Um, and, oh, clarification, that, that were, the withdrawal article is Article Nine. I think it was Eight, I think you said.
It's Eight.
It's Nine.
It's Nine. So we'd be looking for the voters to vote no on Article Nine. Um, my other concern, um, is Articles Four and Five, which were discussed extensively last night at the Budget Committee. And Article Four, I'm looking at a number of 273,000. Article Five, I'm looking at a number of 820,000, which comes up to a million ninety-three. It's my understanding that we're actually bringing in 1.5. So my question would be as to where is the other 405,000 dollars and why is that 405,000 dollars not being reflected as a revenue into the budget? As these two numbers were.
I'm not prepared to answer that question this evening.
Can we get an answer to that, where we are in the budget process? I just...
Mr. Tursey, if you can get that answer for us and clarify that, that would be great, please.
Thank you.
Can I just get clarification on the question?
Mr. Brown.
Clarification in reference to?
1.5 million. Where is that number coming from?
That number's coming from, I believe, we're looking at 1.1, 1.2 million in assurances and the remainder is in federal grants. And that was the final number that I was given that between the assurances and the federal grants, we're looking at 1.5 million.
That was last spring, correct? That you're referring to the, um, the breakdown that was given last spring? It was a 1.5 that included the adequacy?
Right. Includes the adequacy, but that's revenue coming in, correct?
Correct. That however, does not, that goes directly, as I just, I described last night, goes directly to offsetting the taxes. It's not, would not be included in the revenues that would be as part of that warrant. So that could be where you're seeing that difference.
All right.
It also included food nutrition. So that's where, which is not included in those warrants. All the monies that you see in those, those warrants, which you don't see now, um, those revenues were specific to our federal entitlements, which our current federal entitlements were Title I, Title II-A, and our Title I-A focus set aside for Article Four. And Article Five was, that's the SAU budget, correct? Article Five.
Yes.
That 820,000 includes the IDA monies, right beginnings monies, and indirect costs. So adequacy aid and food nutrition aren't included in any of those. They come in as revenues and they go directly to offsetting the taxes. They do not run through our budget, our operating budget.
Mr. Brown.
So then, I guess I'm a little confused. Why, why is that 405,000 not, if we, if we now need to reflect all revenues into our budget, why is that 405,000, if you will, I don't know, don't quote me as that being the exact number. It's somewhere right, right around there, but somewhere around, why is that 405,000 not being reflected anywhere? I, I just, I think this is really going to confuse the, the taxpayers when they go into the ballot box. It's, and if we're only doing part of it, uh, it makes it even more confusing, so.
I'm sure. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's, that was amended last night. So they're not going to see those numbers. That was amended last night.
Yes, correct.
Right, but I still, you know, why, why is that 405,000 left out? Uh, if we're gonna, if we're going to start reporting revenues in the budgets, then we, it should be all of, all, all revenue, not one part A but in part C, but we're going to leave out part B. I think it's either all or, either you, 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 you show all the revenue or you don't show all the revenue. This only doing bits and pieces of it isn't, I believe, to be the right way to handle it. Well, that's my comment.
Okay. Any committee reports? I don't believe so.
I think that's right off the agenda from now, from now till election.
Administration financial reports. Go ahead, Mr. Tursey.
I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Castle this evening for any questions.
He's becoming a grownup.
So the first report we have is the monthly expense report through December 30th, 2014. Any questions on that one?
No, go ahead.
Okay. The next report is the monthly revenue through December 30th, 2014. Any questions on that one?
What are the monies still missing?
I'm sorry, can you clarify?
Um, maybe I'm reading it wrong. Are there monies still not, are there monies we still haven't received?
Town's going to make another installment, right? Every, how many months? Every?
The drawdown's every month.
Every month.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
And then the next, uh, report is the monthly grant overview through December 30th, 2014. Any questions with that?
Go ahead.
The next report is the cash reconciliation of the general fund for October, uh, 2014.
How come we're months behind on that? I don't know, it's January 7th. Why isn't it done for December yet? Just asking.
December, we don't, um, the clerk doesn't get the report, the bank statement until the 15th of the month.
Okay, so why isn't November done then?
I'm not sure. I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, the treasurer's report for October is next. Any questions on that? Okay. And then the last report's Cafe Services Financial Statements through November 31st of 2014.
Who is, um, should these reports give us some indication of what our accounts payable are or what our accounts receivable are? Or is there a way to add that so that we know monthly without having to ask?
Um, I'll have to look into that.
Okay. I guess I'm just concerned because at the last meeting, we had Cafe Services here and verbiage on some of the letters was an issue as well as making sure that the letters were going out in a timely fashion to correlate with the policy.
Yep.
And I just want to, I want to make sure that that doesn't get overlooked because the verbiage in those letters. And then I'd like to see, like, month by month, what the accounts receivable are to see.
Okay.
And that would help us make a, I guess it would help the policy committee make a decision if we have to change that policy to collect those monies.
Okay. I can get that for you.
Thanks.
Yep, any other question?
We're good. Thank you very much.
How hard was that?
It was hard.
We were easy on him tonight. School administrative unit number sixty-four, the enrollment. Mr. Tursey, who's doing that?
Hi. Including your packet this evening is our enrollment as of December 23rd. You can see that we have a total enrollment in pre-K through grade 12 of 629 students. And you can see in the, um, below that, the missing residency forms at Paul School. We currently have thirty-nine missing and at Spalding seventy-six.
Bonnie.
Where are you in your steps to accumulate those?
I wanted to ask the board this evening if you would like for me to send out the second letter, uh, to the parents that have not turned in those residency forms.
I thought that that had already been in place.
The second letter?
I guess I have a question. When you send out the first letter, do you send a copy of the policy with it that says, that stipulates specifically that, that annually they have to fill out that residency form for their child to continue to be educated through our district?
I don't send the actual policy, but I state it in the letter.
Maybe we need to start attaching the policy to the front so they realize that we're not doing it just to, you know, we understand people who lived here for years and it's a nuisance to some. But seventy-six in January is high. It's lower than last year, but it's still high. How do we make the tuition payments to Spalding if they're that high?
They were on high, on higher addition.
This year than they were last year.
Last year, this was all cleaned up.
Yes. So it, how do you make your tuition payments?
How, we still, we make the tuition payment. It's, it's, we're required to make those, those payments.
I understand that.
It's our responsibility.
I find that, that we need to be extremely more forthcoming on collection.
I'm sorry.
Ralph.
I'll yield my call to you if you'd like.
No, I can wait.
Um, I think the quick solution to this, um, would be at this point to ask our truant officer to verify, give him the list of the students who have not been able to complete their residency forms for whatever reason. I'm sure he's got the ability and the desire to verify these students, whether they're here in town or not. The short conversation I had with him, he said it was part of his job. So I think it's time to, I would make a motion to ask the truant officer to take the list from the SAU, whatever that, or the school. to take the list from the SAU, whatever that, or the school, whatever list that may be. And he may be able to sit right down and verify immediately, a half a dozen or three dozen.
Go ahead.
I probably went through that last year of doing that same thing you just mentioned, that he was gonna do that somewhere through, after the first, first of the year, that he was gonna actually do that.
I don't, I don't think he's done it this year. So, my motion is to, to ask him to do it.
I'll second the discussion. I guess my comment with that is, is that verifying, I mean, we can all look at the list, Ralph, and know that students live here or not. It's having the parents be accountable for filling out the paperwork and getting that signature in. Because we can all verify, to the best of our knowledge, that they live there, but they need to take the couple minutes to fill out the paperwork so that we have it in our file.
Some folks are gonna take two seconds, two minutes. Some people are just going to reject it. And if it's an issue of, are they in our district or are they not in our district, you know, I think it's, the question can be answered with the help of our truant officer.
Bob?
But not through the help of the school board, we can't take that list and say, we know they live here. Take an hour for it that way, I mean.
No, that's why I'm asking the board to ask the truant officer.
Right, but you, I think you said that we can take the list ourselves, right?
Hmm, I hope I didn't say that.
I think that.
I, I hope I had said, ask, ask the truant officer to, you know, take whatever list he needs from the SAU or from the school, wherever it's generated. And then ask him to verify.
That came up last year of the same.
I, I think. What's Mr. Tursey's opinion?
Now, you can speak.
Thanks, Ms. Fogg. I, I agree with Mr. Fogg. What's hap, what happened last year is the fact that we changed the process by sending out a self-addressed stamped envelope to people to fill out and send back in. We received several at the beginning with the first letter that went out, this is last year. And then we sent out a second letter and with a self-addressed stamped envelope, and we received some back. And then we sent the truant officer out to confirm the remainder, which was around ten. This year, I have the feeling that people were waiting for the self-addressed stamped envelope.
Why didn't that go out?
It did go out. The first letter went out, and that's why we have fifty percent of them back, because at the beginning of the year, we didn't have any. So, what I'm asking the board, would you like for me to send out the second letter with the self-addressed stamped envelope? Cause you keep incurring those costs for postage. Or do we take Mr. Fogg's recommendation and give the truant officer the list to confirm their residency? The only problem with that is that the policy states specifically that they have to submit.
The form.
The form, and that should be the way the policy is.
So, I'll be happy to send out the second letter. I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that that's what is going on at this point.
Bob?
Michael, at this time last year, we were already through the second letter. The second letter already went out. So, why would we actually change the process when we know it worked last year? You know, we were, our numbers were way below this last year at this time. Why do we need to come back to the board to ask if we can send a second letter out? When it worked last year, why don't we do the same process we did last year?
That's, that's fine.
I'm just asking that question.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think you may be worried about the expense incurred in one board direction.
I'll make a motion, oh, he has motion on table already for discussion.
And you seconded it for discussion?
Yes, I did.
Would you move the question, Madam Chair?
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Hell, no, I mean.
To send that, to give this, the truant officer the list of outstanding students and have him verify residency. That's the motion on the table.
Discussion? I, I still think we should follow the, the process of last year and send out the second letter first, and then go forward with the truant officer. That's my opinion.
But that'll, that'll be your motion after this one fails?
Yes, sure.
Call the, would you call the?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
I was opposed, yes.
Okay, opposed, aye.
Steve, were you in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Okay, Bob.
So, I'd like to make a motion to follow the same process we did last year and send out the second letter with a self-addressed envelope as our next step, and then follow that up with the truant officer's list to him. Whatever time, whatever timeframe that may be after that.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Discussion? Can we add the policy so they understand that we're not doing it to just be crazy? We're doing it because we pay money on them? Like, add that policy so that they know that that's the reason behind it?
I'll add that to my motion.
Okay.
Ralph, second?
I'll second the addition to the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondent? Yes, Mr. Brown?
I'm sorry, I still have a, I still have a couple things.
Oh, okay.
I have something too. Can I, can I, can we, can I ask, um, the Time Warner is right around five sixty-nine a month. I'm seeing a E-rate refund of three thou, we can't be getting three thousand. Can we get a, what, what rate we're paying now for Time Warner? We're, we're now up at the fifty gig, correct? So, can we get a, a number as to what the monthly rate is of Time Warner? Factoring into that, the E-rate?
So, cost for Time Warner?
Per month, please. With factor, with the, what it's, the bottom line after the E-rate has been factored into it.
Get that, Mr. Castle.
Okay, Mr. Tursey, go ahead and finish, I thought you only had a roll move to make, so.
Uh, no, I have, I have a couple things that, I have two more items. And one of the items is I wanted to bring forward, it was brought to my attention, that our eighth graders have the opportunity to extend their, their annual Boston field trip that's been only for one day. In the past, they have the opportunity to actually extend that to two days with an overnight. Because the eighth graders have done an excellent op, excellent job of fundraising, to the point where that is a possibility to do a two-day and overnight. And I see it as an excellent opportunity because my understanding is that the one-day trip, they left very early in the morning, and they came back very late in the, at night. And they weren't able to actually see all the things that they wanted to see. And this would give the eighth graders an opportunity to, on the first day, walk the entire Freedom Trail and reconvene that evening and determine what sights they want to see the, the second day without being pressed to get back. So, I think this is an excellent opportunity, a great way to really just commend the eighth graders for fundraising and extend that out for two days compared to just the single day. That's completely, it's, um, it's on the calendar right now for June fifth, and if we went the second day, it would go to June sixth. And I'd like for the, the board to take action on that this evening and approve that so that the eighth grade team can move forward with having a parent night and getting the word out.
Do you have a question?
Well, my comment would be that I think it's a great idea, but I would like to know who are the referees? I mean, how are we gonna, who are the responsible adults that'll go along?
May I?
Yeah.
And we're fortunate enough this evening to have the eighth grade team with us that can answer any questions that you might have. So, the questions around chaperones and.
Ralph, let, Ralph address this question first.
Yeah, we have all of the four core, you know, academic eighth grade teachers always go. We generally bring paraprofessionals that work with those students as well. Depending on medical issues, we usually, you know, if there's a medical issue, we try to bring the nurse. We usually bring a member of administration. And usually, we have a lot of parents who are interested in coming along, cause it's a lot of fun. So, we haven't sent out anything yet about what parents would be interested. But, you know, we generally have no problem getting people to, that want to come along.
So, I heard teachers, parents, that's eight, right? And nurse maybe, and another administrator? Maybe ten school affiliated personnel?
Yeah, it's usually about that.
How big is the class?
Uh, it's a very small class, we have thirty-seven students.
And you think all of them would be able to attend or go?
We, we want that to happen, yes, very much.
It's up to the, it's up to the parents, whether or not they're.
Yep, the parents are on board and, and as, as long as their behavior is such, I, I think last year, we, I think about February, we basically sat down with the class and said, this is, these are the expectations you need to meet. We need to be able to trust you, we're bringing you to the city. We need to make sure that you can follow the guidelines here, if we're gonna, you know, entrust you to be out somewhere else. And we've been pretty successful, and it seems like, you know, every year, there's, you know, maybe one or two that, that can't participate because of some bad decision-making. But generally speaking, you know, we get everybody, almost everybody.
Bob?
My question was, pretty much answered, was, uh, we're gonna up the ante on the chaperones for this, of course, and then, then Ralph put up the medic, if any medical issues that we had.
Yeah.
That, that would be taken care of too.
I like the four to one ratio. I mean, that sounds safe. And so with more, that's just considering the school affiliated personnel. With more parents, I think that ratio is gonna shrink, so.
Mr. Brown?
I'm trying to recall, and it may have even been before my time on the board, but didn't they used to do overnight? And then it stopped, uh, is there a, a liability issue? Or does anybody recall what, there was a, there was a reason why it stopped? And I'm trying to, um.
Well, the only, I don't know, do you know the history?
I believe we had one class that made some significantly bad decisions. And after that, maybe the staff decided that it was a little overwhelming.
That was thirty-five years ago.
It was a long time ago. We have a new staff, you have new rules in place, but you always have some, you always have the option of maybe one particular class making poor choices which can burn out certain staff members to not want to do it anymore. But, I mean, it was Washington, it was, I mean, it, it has.
Canada, they went to Canada.
They went to Canada, so it has been some amazing things in the past.
Mr. Greg Locke?
I, I think the difference too can be that what you'll find now is a very highly structured design trip by travel professionals. At night, there will be security who will walk the hallways instead of depending on the poor overtired staff to stay up all night and then be wrecked for the following day to be, to be a good chaperone. You're not depending on tape on the doors anymore. It's a, they're very, very highly structured, taking kids to DC, they've taken kids to Montreal, and it, and, and had, had great success with that. You know, really, I think if we're gonna work at this again and make this part of our, our program and as a reward to the eighth grade, this is a great class to do that with, to work, you know, some bugs out if we have any. But really, I have no doubts the staff, and will do a great job with this, they've worked with this company for four or five years. And I think it'll go for it very, very well.
Do we need a motion for that, Mr. Greg?
I would prefer that.
I'll make a motion to support the eighth grade trip being extended to two days.
And I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have fun, let us know.
I wanna go.
Yeah.
It's, it's also worth noting that it, it couldn't happen.